Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the Rockport Select Board meeting for Monday, January 28th, 7:00 PM. Short agenda tonight because it's our second meeting of the month, but we had a few things we had to take care of. So first, we have minutes from previous meetings to approve, and I will entertain a motion on the first of those, which is Monday, November 13th.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, twenty seventeen.
That's the key part.
Well, that's an issue here because we don't have enough people here to vote on that, to approve them, so I don't know. I think in the past, we've just voted them through and they've become approved because the only people here who can vote on them are Doug and I.
Do you think Phil would have four members who would have?
Yes.
Yep.
Right. No, actually not. Tom Gray was here. But Mark was, Mark missed it, otherwise he could have voted on it, so. Well, I think we have to approve them. We can't, we can't leave them not approved, so I think we'll just have to...
Well, for what it's worth, I looked them over and didn't notice any typos and...
It's been a long time. I didn't notice any issues with them, so you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept them as presented.
And I guess I will second the motion. Two of you can vote on it. Two of us can vote on it, I guess, so the record will have to reflect all those in favor, any opposed, and those abstaining. So it's a 2-0-3 vote. It is what it is. I'll declare them approved. Let the pundits come back and argue otherwise.
Someone...
Okay, the next set of minutes is a little more recent, Monday, January 14th, 2019, and I will entertain a motion on these for discussion purposes because I have at least one correction.
All right, motion, we approve.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. The one correction I noticed, and I got to find it now, is the dollar amount for the Public Works thing. There's an extra digit in there somewhere on page four of 10 that says Deborah Hall moved it, four, comma, nine, 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 two of Public Works. And I don't remember what the number was, but I know it wasn't that.
It's four, nine, nine, two.
Exactly, there's an extra nine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we need to make that correction. Other than that, I didn't have anything else.
On page three of 10, it says that, under my comment, I feel that it is more of an opportunity job, but the word was cost, so it's an opportunity cost.
Anybody have anything else? If not, all in favor approving as corrected? Any opposed? Okay, that's the five that I think are... Okay, our next Select Board meeting will be Monday, February 11th, 7:00 o'clock here in the Parker Room, and it will be streamed, so we hope that you can join us in person or electronically. The town office will be closed on Monday, February 18th in observance of President's Day, and on the agenda, there are openings for various committees which you can study, and if you would like to join a committee, we would love to have you. Do we have agenda changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, under new business, B and C be moved ahead of A.
Okay, do you want to move that also ahead of the unfinished business?
Yes, thank you.
And while we're at it, do we want to move it ahead of the Town Manager's Update?
Oh, absolutely.
You want to make believe we already did it?
Right.
There we're going.
Let's move it to last month's meeting.
Okay, so let's, is there general agreement from the Board that we would take those two items before the Town Manager's Update?
Yes.
Okay. Well, having said that, then we have committee applications for the Library Building Committee. We have three in our packet, Denise Munger, Ann Philly, and Bill Chapman. I know Bill had emailed and said that he was unable to be here this evening. Many of us know Bill, so he hoped that that would not be an impediment to his consideration, but he said he would understand if it was. And we also have an application from Richard Anderson, which we received after the packet was put together. So I guess I would suggest for those who are here, if you wouldn't mind coming on up to the podium and give us a brief story of why you would like to serve and...
All of them at once, or you want to do...
One at a time, I think is fine. Rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah, that sounded...
Whoever jumps up and heads up there first.
I probably should wait and see what, how to do the same. Good evening, I'm Denise Munger. My husband and I moved to Rockport four years ago as summer residents, and then this last year have now become full-time residents and are looking forward to becoming involved in the community. I've started working with some of the fundraising related to the library. I've followed the library issue very closely, and I'm so excited that we're in a position to build the new library and that there was a general town consensus on that. My background, I was a lawyer for 30 years in Denver, worked a lot with big projects, project management, overseeing budgets, working with consultants. Having to ask hard questions sometimes, but also that it's a team effort, you know, you're all working together towards my goal, but I think the Library Building Committee is a really important aspect of this process, and I feel like my background and my experience in it is really hard.
Does anybody have any questions for Denise? My only question, and I'll ask it of everybody, it's anticipated that this committee is going to be a pretty hard-working committee, probably meeting weekly. I just want to make sure that you understand that as you're getting in and are okay with that. When the committee meets, I'm not sure, right now, the sort of the precursor to it, the design team has been meeting on Thursday afternoons, but once the committee forms, the committee can determine its own meeting time. But I do think we've discussed it among the owner's rep and other members on the design team, and so we think that it probably will be a weekly meeting, so I just want to make sure everybody understands going in if that's an issue or not.
Yes, and that would work for me. I have, you know, a vacation, you know, a week here and there just planned.
Yeah, certainly, we wouldn't expect everybody to make every meeting, but... Okay, thank you. Who would like to go next?
Hi, I'm Ann Philly, and I've been, my husband and I have been Rockport residents for, gosh, close to 20 years, so for those of you who don't know me, my background is in finance. I was in banking for a number of years, we'll just say that.
We're not counting.
And then when my boys were in high school at Camden Hills, I decided to go back and get my degree in library science, and from there, I had the great opportunity to work at both the Camden Library and the Rockport Library, and eventually became the library director until my retirement. But I hired Ben, so I think I have some credit for that. I'm very excited to continue the process that's been going on in the town. I'm excited by me, by all the things that are coming into play. One of my biggest, really, it's not really a fantasy, but one of my biggest things that I've been thinking about is how that library is going to look on that lot and how we can make it welcoming, and I'm just so pleased to be part of this process. I'm also on the Library Committee and the Friends of the Library, and I work with Denise and the Capitol Campaign. So really, I'm living and breathing all things library, and I just feel like this is another piece of this whole puzzle, and for me, it's just an exciting one. I'm happy to be part of it if I can be.
Does anybody have any questions for Ann? I won't ask you because I know you're already coming to meetings every week, so.
Sometimes twice a week. My name is Richard Anderson, and I've been a main resident for 25 years, Rockport, eight years, and have, through my, you know, my interest here is, as I stated in the application, that I've long supported this library and been involved with it from, it will be as long as Ann has been involved with it in, you know, working towards a new library, and I want to see a successful conclusion to this library. I've been with it a long time and working with it and working for it, and not in always in ways that everybody's in agreement with, but working for it all the time. That's one of the things that you can count on. And I think my background, the reason why I think that was interested in this is that I have a, my 25 years here, I've developed more than $4 million worth of projects, and in, the largest of projects was the former YMCA lot, where I developed three townhouses and a retail space on Bayview Street, and all of that in, down in Dillonham Point, took an 1870 home and moved it, then I added another 3,000 square feet about five years later, and in each of these times, and then the house right here in Rockport, totally renovated in 1803, 1807 cottage at the head of the park. And you are in my front yard, and so this is, I'm not a "not in my front yard" person because I've been for this in my front yard for, from the very beginning. Was it six years ago, Ann, that this started, 13, 12, 13, 14?
2010.
10? Okay, eight years, okay. And so I've been for something in my front yard for eight years then. And the, I think the thing, one of the points I want to make is that, when I've worked, when I've talked with the committee, various committees about the project, the very first when Rick, we were doing the neighborhood tours, that wanted to assure that this library had a couple of characteristics, that it maintains the, sort of the distinct character that Rockport Library has always had, and it's a warm place, it's a friendly place, it's a place I like to go, it's a place I like to go be quiet, and that somehow, that, you know, I don't know what it means, but within a brand-new library, how do you mean, how are we going to have that distinct characteristic for the Rockport Library? And the second is that libraries have always been a place where young, old, rich, poor come to either access technology that they don't have the money to buy in the early years, that would be a book, and then fax machines, and then microfiche, and now today, it's another technology, but it's a place to come where I maybe can't afford to have the best and the latest technology accessible to me. But then, secondly, for those that can afford to have it at their homes, big libraries or big computers, you know, broadband, how do I use it? How do I get the best out of it? And so I want my librarian to be somebody who is a bit of a geek, and in the early years, what would be Dewey Decimal System, what are the, what are the things you had to be an expert in, in to be a librarian? Well, today, a different set of skills, I think, are necessary. So I want to see that as, through this finishing of the project, that the, our library has this distinct character, and this is what we're going to try and achieve. So I want to be a part of this collaboration to see if we can make this happen, and library in Rockport now don't have a great library, but a very distinct and a library of, is a destination for people. And then, I think so, you know, our objective would be then to make sure that this final process of finishing off the building, the inside of the building, that it's be admired by, it's done in collaborations with citizens, because citizens will be a part of this, you know, this committee operation, and it does take into account citizens' concerns and that, but it be in the end, it be admired. It comes in on budget, it comes in on schedule, and that it is admired by citizens and visitors who find that it's, you know, it's just sensitively integrated, the aesthetics, the functionality, the efficiencies, and so that's why I'm here.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Richard? You going to ask a question on the frequency of meetings?
Oh, yes, I should ask you.
Weekly meeting is okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
I do have a question, Rich, as you know, we had a very frank discussion about membership on this committee about a week ago, and at that time, one of your bete noirs was the concept of perpendicular parking versus parallel parking. I just want to make sure that you understand that the scope of responsibility of the Building Committee really doesn't have anything to do with the outside parking.
That's fine with me, that's fine with me.
Okay, all right.
That wasn't clear to me when I, when we talked, Doug, that you, so that if you're making that clarification now, then I think the point, the discussion you and I had is fine, because I, if this is all about the building and what goes on in the building, then whatever I think about parking and street arrangements and landscaping in the park and around is, that's, that's another committee then, and that's another group's decision.
Then I think we'll welcome you.
Yeah, and I'll participate as a citizen on that one.
So, sorry.
Mark?
No, go ahead, I was going to, towards the end of this, I was going to ask the Chair a question.
Go ahead.
Are we going to approve these individually or as a group? And also, I'd like to make it a point that when the committee does meet, that it is published or posted somewhere so that people can attend. Right, and the idea is, in the charge that we had written, the idea was that the meetings of that committee will be here and will be streamed so that the people in town can follow them. I would say, we also have Bill Chapman, who couldn't make it this evening, we do have his application, and I can say, just briefly, having worked with Bill for a long time, then if he joins the committee, he will put forth the effort, I feel confident about that. Now, originally, we had talked about a committee of five to be composed of two Select Board members and three others. We have applications for four others. Personally, I'm not opposed to adding all four and making it six. And some people might say, well, that gives us an even number on the committee, and then we can have ties, but if we're having tie votes on this committee, we got a problem.
Yeah.
So I think we need, we need to have, you know, better agreement than that, so I think that that would be okay, but that's up to the rest of the Board to decide who would like to go with it. Do we need a motion to make the change?
Can I just ask a question, though?
Sure.
And this committee is making recommendations to the Select Board in any event, is it not? I mean, it's not, my understanding is that it's not making final decisions on these matters.
It will be making some decisions, especially, you know, like staying within budget, for example, picking out a flooring material or something of that nature. The way the charge was written, if there are change orders coming in, that there was a threshold for the change order where it had to be approved by this committee, as opposed to just the owner's rep, and then there was a higher threshold where a change order had to be approved by the Select Board, and those numbers were 25,000 and 50,000, so. But basically, the way the charge was written, the Select Board is empowering this committee to make some decisions on things.
I think that, I think that one of the things that needs to be made is the overarching look of what the library is going to be, that the style, I think I sent an email to that effect, and I hope that that's something that the Select Board is going to have the opportunity to weigh in on.
Oh, I think so. I think that the Select Board can make recommendations to this committee, but I think the, one of the reasons to have this committee is that they can become intimately involved with a project and deal with things as they come up on a week-to-week basis rather than have the Select Board come together. And obviously, if big issues crop up, like it's a change order for $75,000 because some material ended up costing more than the budget, then that's going to come to the Select Board for a vote.
The, also, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself with liaison reports, but at the last Design Team Committee, we did authorize Steve Smith to hire an interior designer, Dean Cole, who's done a lot of work in Southern Maine, and I think you'll be able to look at her portfolio and get a real sense of what...
Yep.
And I think the Building Committee is going to be working with not only her, but also landscape designers and things like that to make decisions within the budget as it's set, and a lot of this will depend, and the other thing that this Building Committee will do is when the bids come in, the Building Committee will look through them very carefully and then make recommendations to the Select Board on, you know, choosing a successful bidder, alternate bids, and things of that nature.
I'd also like to just say, too, we use the term landscape architects and stuff, but we're really not talking landscape, we're talking hardscape.
Right.
So I think, I think that'll help with our discussions if we think in those terms instead of landscape.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we accept Denise Munger, William Chapman, Ann Philly, and Richard Anderson to be on the Library Building Committee.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the four applicants as we have. Does anybody have any further discussion on that? I think this would be a good group, we have a lot of skill sets coming in there, so I'm good. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? We do need to think about the Select Board members of this committee. Doug and I have been serving on the design team for, seems like a long time now. So, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to move in, we had discussed this once before, I'm perfectly moving, willing to serve on the Building Committee as a Select Board representative until my term is up in June, and then at that time... Become the civilian. I could, depending on what the, at that time, it would be out of my hands at that time, it would be up to the new Board to decide what they'd like to do, and perhaps another Board member could move in. The nice thing about having the meeting streamed is that if one of the other Board members is interested in joining the committee, you'll be able to follow what's going on and be able to move into it seamlessly, and I, I think there's going to be a lot of reporting back and forth anyway, so.
I would very much like to continue in this role. This has been a great project, and, you know, I'd like to stick with it for now.
So you want to motion, then?
We probably ought to, yeah.
So I move to appoint Doug Cole and Ken McKinley to also, to be the two Select Board Representatives on the Library Building Committee.
I'll second. I've moved and seconded. Any further discussion there? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. As far as when that committee will first meet, was, I missed the last Design Team meeting, is there a Design Team meeting scheduled for this Thursday?
Yes.
Perhaps we could, we could still call that a Design Team meeting and have the Building Committee there, and then the Building Committee could organize itself and choose a chairman and things like that and make a schedule going forward. Does that make sense to all the members who are now on the committee?
It was talked about at the Design Team and the transition going forward, so I think that makes sense.
Okay, so that would be 3:30 on Thursday, this coming Thursday, at the Richardson Room, and then we'll, the new members are, Ann has been coming to those meetings all along, so Richard and Denise and Bill Chapman can attend that meeting and get some briefing on what's going on, and then that committee can organize itself and report at that point. Okay, so we've taken care of that. The next item we have that we had moved in the agenda is preliminary consideration of a food sovereignty ordinance for Rockport, and I don't anticipate having a long discussion on this this evening. I put it on the agenda mainly to see, Marcy had suggested that to me, so I'm going to ask Marcy to come up and talk about it a little bit, but just to see where the Select Board would like to go, mostly because if the Select Board says that this is, for whatever reason, is not a good idea, that it would give those who are interested in the community time to mount a petition drive and get it on the ballot. So at this point, a very preliminary look, and if the Board says, yes, it's something we'd like to consider, then the next step, in my opinion, would be that it would go to our Town Council for a review, and we would then work it up in subsequent meetings.
Is the food sovereign Burger King? That's a different...
Marcy Cassas, Rockport, and I'm going to invite Jesse Watson to join me at the podium as well. Jesse Watson is from Rockland, and he was pivotal in the passing of this same ordinance in Rockland, so he's going to be able to speak probably more intelligently about this than me. But a little bit of background, my family owns one of the last working farms in Rockport, I don't know if you guys know this, and in the summer months, I helped my father run his farm stand. So I took interest in this, which passed during the 128th Legislature, and this is an opt-in program, so municipalities have to opt into it. So far, 40 have, including Rockland, Hope, and Appleton, that are closest to us, but Camden is also pursuing this for June, hopefully, as well as Lincolnville and Alsboro, so we're really kind of pushing hard for this in Knox County. And the premise of this is basically being able to sell soup to your neighbor without having to license your kitchen, or in the case of our family farm, it's about being able to sell more than just the produce. So if I wanted to sell dill pickles to my neighbors, I would not have to license my kitchen to do so, to boil the vinegar. So I hope that you guys have all had an opportunity to read this over, and I'm happy to answer any questions or have Jesse answer any questions, if there are any, but this ordinance was originated from the bill that was passed during the 128th, so this was not something that obviously I created.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Marcy or for...
Jesse.
Sorry, I'm blanking on your name.
Jesse.
Yeah, Jesse, yeah. Jesse, do you want to tell us just very briefly what you did at Rockland with this?
So, yeah, we had a, it was a lengthy, it was a bit of a lengthy process, it took about two years to get this passed in Rockland. Rockland's got a different structure, it's a city council structure, so it's a little different than Select Board, and so how it evolved, how it unfolded in Rockland, it was just on either side of the 128th Legislature, and Rockland nominate, at some point, Rockland nominated me to be sort of the representative for the City of Rockland, to advocate in favor of some kind of recognition of an opt-in program, and ultimately, that was successful, and then after the, after the passage of the Maine Food Sovereignty Act, then Rockland decided to go ahead and pass the Food Sovereignty Ordinance, and really what caused, I mean, just sort of conceptually, it's a fairly simple concept, it codifies in locally binding law, so it's more than a statement of support, it actually is an ordinance, and it basically codifies roadside stands and the ability to sell at farmers' markets what you produce out of the home kitchen, and it removes some of these costly barriers to entry for licensing a commercial kitchen, if you want to sort of dab, you know, dabble in some kind of a side business or something. And since the passage of the Maine Food Sovereignty Act, you know, the opt-in towns has spiked, you know, Marcy said it was, we're up around 40 towns throughout the whole state now. Prior, I think it may have been hovering around 20 or something, and what we're seeing is that, yes, it's roadside produce stands, but it's also favorable toward, you know, like a home bakery kind of thing, and the point of this is to codify peer-to-peer, how I think of it, is it's intended to create a legal space where a community has greater food system resilience, because you distribute food production throughout the landscape and then codify peer-to-peer sales. So it's, or me-to-the sales is how we, how we call it, and so it emphasizes, you know, responsibility both for the farmer or the producer and also the patrons as well.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for...
And I did want to let you know that I reached out to the Miller Farm and Aldemir, and Aldemir under Aldemir Falls Erickson Preserve, so we've all talked about this. The only farm that I didn't reach out to in Rockport was the Two Brothers Farm, just because I didn't have a contact for them, but we were all kind of talking about it and discussing it, but it's so much more than just your local farmers. It is the person making birthday cakes and wanting to sell them to their neighbor, or biscuits, or whatever it might be.
I support the idea, I mean, I've heard about this sort of on a national basis for quite a while, but just to play the devil's advocate, I mean, I, you know, the 800-pound gorilla is food safety. Do you want to just say a few words about that?
Absolutely. Is our, is our food safe? Think about all the E. coli outbreaks that you've seen recently with different lettuces. That wasn't happening at our little farm in Rockport. You would be safer buying our little, you know, romaine lettuce, and we're going to govern ourselves, so if I get sick eating your soup, Doug, guess what? So, if I get sick eating your soup, Doug, guess what? Nobody's going to eat your soup. And so, because of, I think, as far as, and you can speak to this too, policing this, we're going to be able to kind of police ourselves, especially with social media and things out there, to police ourselves.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Was the intent to get a feel for this issue and begin the education process, or is it to? It's just, yeah, it's, it's, it's basically just to see, do we move to the next step, which would be reviewed by town council? I don't anticipate doing anything more than that this evening. And, and I think we may have a lot more detailed questions when it comes back from town council at that point about some of these issues that have been raised. So, I don't think we have to get into chapter and verse over this evening.
The, the two that I have, just for further education, one is the food safety part. I understand the part about produce and vegetables, but then, any processing that occurs and how is food safety guaranteed in that aspect of it? Who would be liable? Is the town liable in any way as a result of?
It's in the, it's in the ordinance.
Yep. And then lastly, the impact, either intended or unintended, on others that are currently licensed and do this type of thing for a living? How, and what would the impact of that be on people that are currently owning and operating bakeries, et cetera, or doing what other, whatever type of processing they need to do as a, I won't say a legitimate business, because the farm is a legitimate business, but as a licensed kitchen and opportunity versus those that don't? I, that needs to be assessed in terms of fairness.
And, and I guess just as, as a preliminary response, that one of, a lot of this hinges around the idea that this is a scale-dependent issue. So, it's really focused on peer-to-peer sales. Anybody who's trying to sell to any kind of a distributor, restaurant, or, you know, co-op or store, all the regular rules apply to those kinds of sales. So, it, so it really is about, like, you know, the, the mom trying to, you know, sell some bakery goods out of the home kitchen and not wanting to make those substantial capital investments in, in, in a commercial kitchen. But, but, I mean, in short, we have answers to all of those.
Because if you're talking about farm stands and those types of things, you're competing directly with others that are licensed.
No, because farm, you don't, we don't have to license our farms. You don't have to have a license to do produce.
Well, it sort of comes to mind when I think of, when I think of State, State of Maine Cheese, and they have their farmer's market, where people bring things in that they've grown, and do we have any knowledge of whether?
That'd be a good question to ask.
And if you look in the ordinance, because of federal law, meat and poultry is excluded.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, to your, to the health issue, Doug, those would be the biggest, yeah, those are the big ones, right there.
I was just talking, like, the corn, the boards, the pumpkins and things.
And all of those, we can already, we are already legally allowed to sell. It's going that one step further. So, we sell pickles at our farm stand, but we sell sour pickles, because those just brew in a five-gallon bucket. There's no heating of anything, but, so we can't sell dill pickles, because you have to boil the vinegar and the salt together. So, it would just take it that step further for us. But what they're seeing in other towns is, say, a mom and pop, there was one example of a mom and pop, they wanted to roast coffee beans, but they didn't know if they wanted to really go all in and start this business. And so, they dabbled in it a little bit, and they found the success in it, and then they started a business, licensed their kitchen, so that then they could sell it to the restaurants and to the grocery stores and to the different. So, to, to sell it to anyone beyond your neighbor, you have to be licensed.
Well, I think, as I say, a lot of those questions, we'll go into in more detail, if the board wants to, to move forward with it. So, at this point, I'm sort of just looking at, for a sense of the board, do we want to ask Rick to forward this on to the attorneys and, and get it reviewed, and then, and then it'll have to have public hearings, et cetera, if we get it on the ballot and things like that. So, do we want to take the next step? I'm seeing not.
I have no objection to taking the next step.
Yeah.
Right, and just food for thought, and our deadline is for the June ballot, if we're thinking about it?
It's going to be, it's mid-April.
A public hearing in, in April, something like that, yeah. I'm trying to get that window, so that everybody's on the same page about when.
Yeah, the big thing would be is, if, if, if the board looked at this and said, oh, my God, this is crazy, we're not, we're not interested in this at all, the best thing would be to let them know that now, so that they.
That we could do a citizen's petition.
You could do a citizen's petition campaign.
But like I said, we're not doing this in isolation. Camden, Lincolnville, Alsboro. So, really, it's about, hey, we're going to all combine forces to make sure that we're educating the public about this as a whole.
Can I just ask, so, when an organization has a, an event upstairs, and the organization is selling brownies and cupcakes and every, are they kind of in violation?
They, I mean, if, if, if the FDA wanted to.
They could do that.
Yeah.
So, this covers them too?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. And, and it really, I mean, that is part of the, you know, part of this ordinance is meant to codify longstanding traditional practices throughout any rural town. And, and, and just as, as further food for thought, the language in this current template has, has been vetted by the, by the authors of the main Food Sovereignty Act, and it's in total compliance with the current statute.
Okay, well, I think, it seems to me it's a sense of the board to at least take this to the next step. So, Rick, you've got your running orders there, and we'll take care of that.
So, can we just clarify, is the next step ordinance review committee, or are we?
No, it would, it would, it's not a land use ordinance. It would be a separate standing alone. It's going to be reviewed by town council, and then we'll get back, and then it'll be on a later Select Board agenda.
Okay.
And it's, and then we'll schedule public hearings, et cetera.
If there's been any other legal reviews in Rockland, it would be helpful if I had those, to send those along, you know, so that he's not reinventing the wheel.
Okay, I can look those up.
Yeah, if there's any, anything, if any other lawyers looked it over and has, you have an opinion from that lawyer, that would be great.
Rick, would you make sure the council looks at the liability issues of the town?
Yep.
And again, we have to make sure that we understand that we have to have all of these things in place before the deadline in April.
Yep.
Right, to be honest, and that only leaves February and March.
That's in there.
Are you thinking the last, are you thinking E., 6E? Is that what you're thinking?
As it talks about liability of the people.
Right, it doesn't, that's what I'm asking. She, and Marcy thinks it's covered in here, but.
It's covered.
Well, we can get, we can get the question answered.
If she's referencing 6C, that doesn't cover it. So, I just wanted to know if there's another section.
There is, and I'll get it, I'll get it to you directly. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you both for coming in and for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will pop up to the Town Manager's Update, and typically, just an update. When we have a second meeting in the month, we don't do a full-blown Town Manager's Report, just an update, which we have in our packets and was published in the media, today or yesterday, I think. And so, do we have any questions of the manager on the update? And Rick, do you have anything else you want to add to what's in there?
Just the, actually, posting it in, it's getting posted online, and it's getting sent out in Fa, by Facebook. I actually get comments from people about, people actually read this stuff. Who knew? That people pay attention, and they are reading it. So, it is getting out there, and the press is using it as well, so.
I had a question on the boat that broke away from the harbor. Didn't I read that it took the, the float, the town's float with it?
No, not the town's.
Oh, it wasn't the floats, it was a private float. Okay, thank you.
As part of a quiz, the manager, as I like to call it. Several months ago, we had an emergency management drill in the town about a winter, major winter storm. And there were some recommendations that came out of that. A lot of it was policy updates and everything, but can you, do you know off the top of your head how we're doing on that stuff?
Not off the top of my head, but I do have a cheat sheet here. So, you know, there were several things that we've got, that were listed. The emergency policies, those have all been drafted, and they've been completed, and we'll start, hopefully, start training on those new policies next month. The generator is getting installed. I think this generator was shipped on the 24th, is, was the last thing I heard. Everything else is in place. It's just a matter of plugging the generator, you know, putting the generator on a pad and, and getting it all wired up and plugged in. But as, as far as I know, everything's good to go with that. The community shelter is in process. I believe that they're, I think they're on schedule for a generator next summer to get.
At the Masonic Hall.
The Masonic Hall, yep. So, they'll be, we'll be working on that memorandum of understanding. Also, training is scheduled for the new emergency, I mean, the, is part of the first training, there's a second training for the Emergency Operations Center to, to, to get that up and running and tested, start pulling that stuff together. The last item was the, equip the municipal emergency operations center. That's in this year's budget, started out in this year's budget, but it's been cut out because of LD1s to try and get the number down. I think that number was about $34,000 or something. That was a $34,000 budget item to put in, you know, some, you know, a bunch of, a bunch of stuff in there, video, audio, video to display. And the antenna, though, the antenna, it will be going up, I believe, right?
Okay.
So, the, the extra antenna, but there is about $35,000 worth of materials that need to be put in place to make that an emergency, a formal emergency operations center. We'll see how that makes it in the budget process. And the one piece that, the incident tracking at municipal EOC level, that we're still working on, we've got to work on that.
And at some point, we had talked about perhaps exercising, you know, the emergency operations plan in a winter storm or something. I, I remember when we had the larger one a few weeks ago, somebody suggested it the day before, and we couldn't, we, yeah, I think Doug might have been the one. But it would be good to sort of keep in mind, and maybe between Diane, who is the emergency, the safety coordinator or whatever, and you.
Emergency operations.
Yeah, if you could let us know maybe when you feel that, that we're ready to do that, that it might not be a bad idea to try if you have a winter storm. If we don't, well, we have enough notice, we have a winter storm coming, we can, we can try to exercise it a little bit and see.
We've got to get the training done on the plan. You know, the plan has been pulled together, so now we've got to get the training done. And I believe that's scheduled, isn't it? For the middle of February, so the training is scheduled.
The next time it rains.
Yeah. I do have a question, as I always do. Is, I've always, I usually ask if there is, you know, how the job descriptions are going, and I see in here that they're not done yet, but can you give the board a date that they'll be done? I mean, we've been at this for quite a while.
Yeah. Can I give you a date? No, I can't.
Can't, like?
I mean, I can.
You know, before June 30th, or?
Yeah, they can be done before June.
You know, it's been, well, nine months anyway, so. And I know of a lot of other things seem to take some priority over something that's been one of my pet peeves.
I don't remember those are supposed to be put together, and then they come to me too, so.
Those back in October.
Yeah, yeah, but I will expedite my review of them once we're at that point.
Any other questions for Rick?
I do. Last meeting, we talked about looking at expediting the outstanding meeting minutes and notes, looking at old agendas where they were once listed, and doing a cross-check of what we've already received. I think the numbers somewhere around 19 or 20 sets of notes.
I know the.
Do we have a plan?
Yeah, I know the town clerk has been working diligently on trying to get them all done. Been, I mean, she's heard that we've.
I have a couple more done that I haven't gotten done in time to have them moved in.
Right. She's working very hard trying to get them caught up.
In following Mark's line of questioning, do we have a date?
Yeah.
This is supposed to be my update. You know, it, it depends on Linda's, you know, ability to get them all done. I, you know, I, I know.
I would, I would be certainly okay, because they're all live-streamed. I think if we just captured the motions and the outcome, and we didn't capture the blow-by-blow description of who said what when, because that's already on.
I totally agree.
Con condensed down to a couple pages, we'd be.
Certainly with the older ones, just to get them done. And I, I had a discussion with Linda about that recently, that if we can just get the motions, the votes, and the action taken, that we can get those off our plate, and then, you know, hopefully, we can get ourselves caught up.
So, with that modification, is there estimated date that we could?
But there's, when there's only three of us in the office sometimes, and we had a holiday this week, we had training until 1:30 on Tuesday, that cut out almost two whole days.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a date, I'm not looking for sometime this week, I'm just.
We made over 300 calls to people to remind them to come license their dog to avoid a $25 late fee, which took a good deal of our time, and then people coming in to license the dogs.
So.
We have people at the county, it's very difficult to one person to sit there and not.
So, Jeff, if, if it's possible, Linda and I will talk during the week.
All right.
And at max, we may all come back, come back with a better estimate of when we can get those done.
I'll try to get maybe six of each meeting, and then.
Sure. I just, I think we ought to have a, some kind of a target and a milestone where we can say, look, we can get this wrapped up by sometime in the spring or something.
How's that?
That would be great.
We get two.
We get two.
One month, okay.
Okay, anything else for Rick? Okay, if not, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is to approve the internal control policy. And we have in front of us a book which has.
Denise, you're leaving. This is the best part.
Oh, yeah, this is the best part.
Financial Procedures Manual.
This is the best part of the meeting.
So, I guess I would let Deborah lead the discussion on this, and Megan as well?
Yeah, Megan, step right up. So, so Megan, okay, Megan and I worked on, since the last meeting, we, Rick distributed to department heads, or somebody distributed to department heads, the internal control draft, and Linda had three comments, Ben had one comment, so I just want to talk about those for a minute. We also followed the board's preference, and our preference, which was to strip out all of the investment policy language, the credit card stuff, the, what else did we do, the?
Reserve policy.
Reserve policy, the purchasing policy. All of that stuff was stripped out. And what you have in front of you is the draft of the internal control policy, which we see as the overarching policy. I think there's going to be, there's going to be a draft memo that is going to, introduction that's going to be on here, that's basically going to suggest that the internal control policy is the overarching policy, that all other policies have to be consistent with that. And then, the idea is that as, you know, for example, the reserve policy, I personally think there are some changes, just, just cleanup changes that need to be done, non-substantive changes that need to be done to the reserve policy. And I think that as we address those, and then the way this is set up, we can easily, you know, insert those. Having them all together, we know that if something is, a change is made to one of these other policies, you know, we need to make corresponding changes here to the internal control policy or vice versa. So, the idea is for it to be a, basically, a complete manual. I think, I don't know if the vehicle policy, the vehicle policy is in here. There are a couple of policies that have not yet been finalized and adopted by the board that Megan has in the pipeline, and I'm going to work with her on those, so that after the budget season, that those would be a couple of additional policies. I think one has to do with personal use of town property, and the other one is disposal of obsolete property, isn't that it? And then, with respect to Linda's, Linda had some concerns about, with the online banking situation, because it's her department that typically does the deposits, and you don't want to have the person who does the deposits also do other parts of the process. So, we made some changes here. Megan worked, she, she came up with some suggested language, and we have, we have a provision that gives Linda's office limited access to the online banking system, so that they can make the deposits that they need to make consistent with their duties. And then there was a second thing that had to do with. And then there was a second thing that had to do with processing. If Linda can't process all the checks in the same day, then, you know, we have a, an amendment that encourages, encourages her to seek help within the finance department to do that, or, I know that it does say that she has to get the approval of the town manager, written approval of the town manager not to do it, but you could, I think, Ron, get, have a standing, a standing written approval for a certain period of days to take care of that backlog at tax season. I mean, it's not like the town manager has to be there every day, giving a written approval every day, I don't think. I don't know if Ron has a different view. But, and then the third one is donations. I think Linda's a little concerned about the fact that she holds on to checks for some period of time, when we have, like, donations to the town until the select board approves them, but I think we, it was our recommendation not to make a change to that. And then Ben's, Ben's suggestion was, just had to do with the amount that was in his cash drawer.
Thirty, fifty dollars instead of thirty.
Yeah, so we bumped him up to fifty, which was consistent with the others, and he feels, works better for his needs. So, did I, I, I think I covered every thing since the last meeting.
So, this, what we have in front of us is different than what's in the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
And I emailed it out last Friday.
Oh, yeah, she emailed.
Because what came, what came in the packet looked like it hadn't seen any changes.
Right, it hadn't.
That's, that's correct, and then she emailed out what we, we worked hard on Friday to get it out to you guys, and that reflected everything that you see here in the book.
The one in the packet, it was issued Wednesday.
Wednesday, right.
The one, I think it's good that we stripped out the stuff. Is the credit card policy going to live in this book also?
It is.
Part of the purchasing policy.
Yeah.
Purchasing policy.
Oh, it's part of the purchasing policy?
Yep.
Okay, I guess, we had approved it as a separate policy at one time.
And then when you did the purchasing policy, we combined them into one.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
But tonight, we're just talking internal.
Just the internal control one.
Yeah.
So, is the expectation that you still have some more work to do on this, and we'll?
We're hoping not.
No.
Just take that word "draft" off.
Yeah.
That's it.
I guess I wasn't sure, because I remember me, I got an email from you saying you weren't sure whether you'd be ready to vote on this time.
Right, but then we got it out on Friday, anyway.
So, this is Wednesday's policy with the additional changes and then as you just discussed.
Yes. That were sent out on Friday.
And I redid all the formatting and everything.
Right, they were sent, these changes were sent out to you guys on Friday.
Right.
Because I was in the office working with Megan on it on Friday.
All right, so, Rick, have all the people that are stakeholders in those changes seen and discussed those and felt okay with the proposal?
The newest changes that we did on Friday? No.
All right, but the newest changes were based on the feedback?
Based on their, feedback from them.
And has every department manager had the opportunity to provide feedback?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So, we're looking for a motion to approve the internal control policies and procedures as presented.
That's what we would be looking for.
So, moved.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the draft in internal control policy as presented. Do we have any discussion on that? I'm, I'm just, as long as all department managers have had a chance to take the review, and the feedback has been sincerely considered and, and applied as it makes sense, I'm good.
I can assure you, it's been sincerely considered.
And it seems to me that the concern about processing, you know, if you get a, get a whole boatload of taxes in one day, that that's been addressed in here, that, and it seems like you've come up with a good solution, and I don't know if Ron wants to say anything about that.
I think you're going to have all the time, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and you guys know your business because you sit with chairs, very unique situations, of which that's one of them.
Yeah.
That I think you've addressed, and I think that this is something that I would put forth, knowing that it's a work in progress, and that you're going to apply what you do every day to that document, and then as the things come up, you're going to get feedback from your people, you know, and I think that that, what you have in front of you will generate that feedback even more so every day.
It's a living document.
They always are.
And it's breathing too, for the sounds of things, so.
And I think the decision not to do anything about the donations, I think, is the right one. I think there's a statutory requirement or a charter requirement for the select board to accept those donations.
In the charter.
Yeah, we discussed it, yeah, was it the charter?
Yeah, so I think we'd have to change the charter, and we don't want to get into that, and it's, it may be an inconvenience, I suppose, but.
The ones I was concerned about is the ones, I don't know if you really call them donations, it's in lieu of taxes.
Right.
So, are those really donations?
I think they are.
Technically, they are, because they're not required to pay them. They're voluntary, so, you know, technically, they do stand as a donation.
Well, I mean, the, yeah, the reason you'd want to hold on to it is, I mean, say somebody sent in a payment in lieu of taxes, and they weren't really eligible to be a payment in lieu of taxes, and we decided, you know, to cash that check as payment in lieu of taxes, you know.
In other words, they were liable for the taxes, but they sent something else.
They said, we're going to say, send this in instead of paying.
Five hundred bucks.
Right, I know, it's never happened, but you, you know.
That's in the rest.
Yeah, right.
And it might be, to take it a step further, it might be a check that comes in with stipulations attached to it, and merely just cash, cashing that check and depositing that check could tie us to those stipulations, and we don't want something like that to happen, because it does say the select board has to approve those donations.
In the charter, so, yeah, okay, enough of that.
I think that's, that's a good outcome there, in my opinion. Anybody else have any further comments on this? I'd like to thank Megan and everybody for working hard on it. I think, Linda, your, your concerns, that was a lot of work to go through it and figure out those concerns, and I think you made a positive change on it. I'd like to thank Megan, and Deb, and Linda, and the department managers that contributed to it, as far as getting it pulled together into a document that my sense is everybody can live with, it, it covers the concerns of all, and. Good strides forward. It's a good, good thing to see. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you again. Good work, Deb. Okay, now we have a report from the town auditor. Ron, come on up, introduce yourself to all the folks watching at home.
Good evening. I'm Ron Smith, Principal with RHR Smith &amp; Company. Congratulations to the town for putting forth, I think, what is a great effort for a document to go forward that you can adjust at any time, you know, when necessary. So, I'm here to present the June 30, 2018 audit, the financial condition of the town, go over some best practices, which I think have been addressed clearly in that working document, and answer any and all questions that you may have of me in my role and, and the financial condition of the town. So, on June 30, 2018, the financial condition for the town's general fund improved about six hundred thousand dollars. You went from two point six million dollars of carryover balance to about three point two million dollars of carryover balance. And that was largely caused by you not spending all your budgeted appropriations, and your property tax collections and your excise tax collections were favorable to the tune of over two hundred thousand dollars for 2018, and all that contributed to the rise of six hundred thousand dollars of, of an increase in your position from June 30, 17 to June 30, 18. And applying that to your fund balance policy, it, it certainly meets and exceeds your fund balance policy, which states that you will keep at least twelve percent of your operating budget in reserve, so you are at somewhere around probably twenty percent, you know, so you're certainly at and above the expectation. One of the things, you know, that we had talked about with your fund balance policy, it really doesn't address a trigger when you go over that twelve percent, you know, but I think that that's unique for Rockport and not, and, and unique for every municipality, you know, and something maybe to consider down the road is coming with some kind of a mechanism, you know, on funding reserves, on, which is another whole policy in itself, funding, you know, for tax relief and any other things that might be unforeseen, you know, that come up within the municipality. But clearly you have, you know, your expected fund balance sitting in reserve right now, and you've exceeded that expectation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Was it, I think it was your suggestion last year that we be at around seventeen percent.
Yeah, we like to see around sixteen percent, which is the equivalent of sixty days, and being at twelve percent, you're at about forty-five days, you know, and the benchmark usually for standard and pores and moody's, when they go out and rate you, is they like to see you at sixty days of your operating budget, and clearly, your policy dictates that, you're at that, but your policy, you know, has a lower expectation, and that's twelve percent, which is about forty-five days.
But we're at, in actuality, we're at twenty percent.
Yeah, you're about twenty percent. Yeah, you're about probably eighty days, I would say.
That was as of June of eighteen?
That was as of June of eighteen, correct.
Right, okay.
And one of the things, so, there's the good news, one of the things that I would certainly make you aware of, and I believe you adjusted your rates last year, your wastewater department, its financial condition went down about six hundred thousand dollars last year, largely due to the, the wear and tear on infrastructure, but you actually had an operating loss in your wastewater department too. And that certainly, when you're an oceanfront community and, you know, and running a sixteen million dollar government, you know, and as I probably said last year, when that phone rings and it's regarding your wastewater department, it can be an expensive phone call, and our concern is, you know, is that there's, with some deterioration in eighteen of your financial condition for your wastewater department, for sure. And I believe you have raised rates back this past fiscal year, and you may not just have seen the full impact of that, but I think that 2019, this year, will be a good year for you guys to benchmark, you know, for lack of a better way to say it, your wastewater operations, for sure.
We have also sent out tax leads for those uncollected sewer charges, and we've collected about seventy-five percent of that since we sent those tax leads out.
And that was over two hundred thousand dollars, I believe, so.
Not tax leads, wastewater leads.
Wastewater. Reserves, you got about one point one sitting in trust. I know, Doug, you had asked about your, basically your welfare assistance or public assistance fund, that was over four hundred thousand dollars on June 30, 18, and I believe your cemetery was over six hundred thousand, you know, which makes up over a million, a million dollars of the one point one, you know, sitting in trust at the, at the town. Capital reserves, you had about one point one million dollars in capital reserves, that was largely set aside for a lot of your department equipment reserves that you have, like fire and wastewater, has a reserve account for its facilities as well. So, they're mainly wastewater and fire, as I recall, were the two big ones, you know, that you had for sitting in the capital reserve. You certainly had highway, you certainly had, I believe, some library reserve money, you know, and some other various opera house, some other reserves and pockets of money, you know, that are detailed in the document, that total about one point one million dollars in addition to, you know, your general operating fund balance of the town. Last year, I think I gave you a grade of about a B+.
Just getting ready to ask.
I'd probably give you that same grade, maybe getting somewhere between a B and a B+, just for what happened in this, with the sewer, and, and I would still reserve the fat, I'd give you the B+, you know, and that would be conditional upon where and what happened with your sewer rate and your collection of your sewer fees and assessments, how that plays out on June 30, 2019. So, but general fund operations, you're still at a solid B+ for sure, so.
Another, most of you, well, at least two of you, weren't part of the wastewater budget that we did last May. We had a fairly substantial decrease in our actual usage, which also played an effect into the fees that we collected. We didn't expect that drop-off in the usage, and it really hit an impact on the budget that we're in now, but it also affected the prior year's budget because of that decrease in usage.
So, I think nineteen will be a good benchmark for you all to sit back and really assess where wastewater is at and what the cost of that operations is.
Ironically, some of that may come from people, I, I know the hospital is, always a big user, has done a lot of work to be more efficient with their water usage.
Yeah.
And of course, that means that less is going down the drain and.
I think, looking at their reports, it looks like, looking at the reports that I get monthly from Penn Bay, it looks like that's where a lot of the drop-off was, is the improvements that they've done to their facility, that when we developed that, the sixteen budget or the eighteen budget, we were depending on that usage, and we didn't get that usage because of the updates that they were doing to the facility.
Did, another question, did, we talked about the numerator on that equation, how about the fees associated that we're being charged for processing wastewater? Did those increase year over year?
They, Camden has taken a little bit of an increase, and I think that's because of the changes in their usage fees, as well as, it seems that we have some infiltration problems, which we didn't think that we had, we're working on getting those resolved, we're doing testing. We'll have an intern this summer inspecting basements, is the plan, to see if some pumps are connected to the system that aren't running through meters. So, we haven't necessarily seen the drop-off at the treatment plants, but we have seen the drop-off in what's being metered.
I, I was thinking on the cost of treatment, has that increased?
It has, yeah. And it will increase when Camden does their upgrades, we'll be hit with a portion of their bond payment too, which will also affect our rates.
And that's why we're working on the, on the inflow numbers, to try and get that under control.
Yeah, that's very important, and, and I know in the budget planning for wastewater, past several years, Megan's been very good about making, making sure that we put enough in the reserve, so that when that bond payment hits from Camden, that we're, we're not having to take a gigantic increase in rates to cover it, okay?
And I would just say, lastly, for a conversation piece, without getting into too much detail, we met back in December for McCo Solid Waste, you know, and talked about the exposure there with post-closure care cost and not enough money being, you know, basically in the bank right now to, to, to pay for that day, when and if that day comes. There was a big settlement for Perk, you know, that the, that the, that the joint venture received about one point four million dollars. That was all redistributed to the municipalities based on the equity sharing and the inter-local agreement, and you guys were directed at town meeting to take your four hundred thousand dollars, I believe was your share, a little more of that, and put it into that reserve account for that day, you know, when that phone rings, and that's something that's being acted upon right now for that town meeting, so. And the conversations that we had with December, and I'm actually going to have this conversation in Camden in two weeks, you know, it's the same conversation, just to continue back in December, is there's clearly not enough money in this landfill, you know, to cover, you know, let alone the operations and any increases of that, but the reserves to close it down, and, and I know that that's been a conversation that's been highly discussed over this past year, for sure. So, that would be the last talking point that I would say that would affect the town of Rockport, and clearly you went, you were serious about it, went to your townspeople last year, put an article, you know, in your warrant, and they're directing you to move your equity share into that reserve account for that day.
And are we, ask Rick while Ron is here, where do we stand with that? Have, have we received all the money we're going to receive from Perk?
We've received all that money, and the check you have now is four hundred and thirty.
Four hundred and three thousand.
Four hundred and three thousand dollars. Camden has a check, I would imagine, would be in the four fifty range, four sixty range. They, unbeknownst to me, no other town other than us went forward with.
That was my next question, is I know there were a couple of the smaller towns that were, that were, were holding back on that, and I don't know where that stands.
But it was just, mainly just hope.
That was definitely a big conversation in December as well, for sure, you know, about that.
That's a question for Ron, I guess, is, you know, what does the town do if, if the other towns don't cooperate with that?
So, a couple of things, it doesn't matter, is what I would say, Ken, because you've got an agreement that basically says when that phone rings and you have to pony up, that agreement says you will pay. The, the pain becomes, if you don't have the money set aside to pay, where are you going to get it? You know, and as we discussed, the only options are either to start banking it or borrow down the road, you know, to fund whatever your share of that equity interest is to do that, and that was a big conversation back in December, and I believe Camden was the only one, you know, excuse me, Rockport was the only one at that table that actually went to town meeting to set that money aside specifically, you know, for its reserve. But as I told Rick and Megan, it doesn't matter, you have an agreement that clearly says you will pay your share. You know, the question's going to be is where you're going to get the money, and you have four hundred thousand dollars, you know, sitting in that reserve fund, you know, because of that perk settlement, you know, that you'll be able to put closer to, you know, the, the funding of your share, you know, of, of post-closure care cost, so.
With what Ron is saying, I don't know what McCo Solid Waste is doing, but Deborah is now on their finance committee, but it might be a good idea for the town to realize what our total cost for the closure is, and either we start putting money every year into a reserve account, or we plan on utilizing that assigned fund balance to pay for that, but we're going to have to have some way to come up with that kind of money.
Yeah.
When they close the actual facility.
Allison and I, who chairs the, McKellar, who chairs the.
Allison and I, who chairs the, McKellar, who chairs the finance committee, have had, you know, had a discussion about that at the last board meeting, and that we are, we are going to work hard on the finance committee to get a handle on what those closure fees are as soon as possible.
And I just know, it's, it's a big, it's a big conversation, for sure, and, and, and I can just tell you...
It's growing all the time.
You know, that Allison and, and Deborah, they, they understand that there's not enough money there, it's just coming up with some kind of plan, and I'm not sure it starts at the municipality, I think it was pretty clear it's going to start at the corporation, the interlocal corporation...
Right.
And then spin down to the municipality, say, here is what our plan is, so.
But all, you know, as Ron and I talked about this today, is, this has been, Ken, you've been, you've been around long enough to know that when we started this whole process, the whole idea was that the money that was coming in from Perk was going to be used to go to the closure front, and, but it took so long, I mean, it's been three years in the making, probably, and, you know, the board has all changed, the board members have changed, even some of the executive committee has changed. But the, the plan all along, from back when Bill and Tracy were on the board, and they were the representatives, was, that was the goal, was, you know, we were not going to turn that four hundred thousand dollars into a fire truck, it was going to get turned into filling that gap in the, in the closure.
Yeah, that's the only prudent thing to do.
Yeah.
My understanding is that Camden had, at the last Midco Solid Waste, I was going to say this in my committee report, but anyway, at the last meeting, Camden announced that they, the board had decided that they would return that money if there were sufficient safeguards, and that all the towns did so, returned the money over to Midco Solid Waste. So I think that's a discussion, you know, and Hope, I think, was concerned that it be used only, of course, for closing. So I think that, that's one of the discussions the finance committee is going to have to have in terms of, you know, I think there's a lot of things that have not been in place from a financial security sort of standpoint, that we're going to make sure are in place, and so maybe that's something that can be...
And I would say budgeting practices being one of them, you know, as far as how money was spent and, and directed, and certainly, I think that that was a big conversation back in December, you know, and looking how you not only put your budget together, you know, how that impacts, you know, how you fund these reserve accounts, and how it impacts basically how you spend your money, you know, and I think that what was thought that was going on, you know, in this cash flow statement that I really don't want to get into, you know, tonight, there, there was a lot of spiritual bait in December, and I really don't see this thing falling through the cracks at all anymore, so I don't.
Yep. On page two of the manager's letter, there's four areas that opportunities were identified and some recommendations provided. What are the status of those?
My, my manager's comments address that the internal control policy will take care of a lot of the segregation of duties, the cash receding, the, is also addressed in the internal control policy that you just, you just voted on. The certificate of assessment, that error was, is, you now have a new procedure in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again, correct?
Yeah, revenue sharing was counted twice, it was counted on the assessment form and in the revenues from the budget, so we've created a form that has to be filled out, which will alleviate that problem.
All right, so certificates of assessment, recommendations been acted on.
And then the library, the final, the final one is that the, we'll be working with town council and with the library committee to come up with a solution to the, you know, the questions that come up that Ron brings up, which has been, it's been an outstanding question for several years, and we, we do have to figure this piece out.
Well, as part of the, my liaison report, again, I was going to talk about this a little bit, but I think since we have all the players in the room with Heaven here, Ron here, and Rick here, could someone just give a very quick synopsis for the two new members about what the issue is here with the library trust fund? And like Rick says, we, we believe we have a plan going forward, but I think it would be good to review for the select board what the issue is.
So I, I would just sum it up like this, back in nineteen eighty, you know, there was some concern over basically authority, you know, of the library's money, you know, and who had it. And it looks like, based on that town meeting, you know, there was some authority given to the library trustees, that's the equivalent of the Board of Selectmen's authority here, you know, and it sounded like it was a very contentious conversation to get to that best practice. Clearly, there was some support from the library side on their position, and there was support on the town side that contradicted that, and, and there's some legal counsel and some reference about whether, what the town meeting, you know, the results of that town meeting, or whether they were even legally binding, you know, and statutory would hold that.
A lot of this is in your packets, too.
And that, all that conversation piece, and I really recommend it because it's, it really kind of delineates what the story is, you know, is, is, is just that. And I think I have every reason to believe that the town and the library want to do what's right for the town, and that that money's going to be clearly the library's money, you know, to do that. It's just a function of authority, who has what, you know, and, and that it's all within the intent of statute, you know, at the end of the day. And there's some controversy back in town meeting where really, when you read it, that, there was really nothing settled at town meeting, except delineating that the library trustees were going to be recognized as municipal officers, you know, of the town, which clearly gave them some expressed authority, which obviously, the Board of Selectmen at that time disagreed with, so. So, and I think that it's something that can easily be rectified by now, by working with the library board of trustees, you know, and coming up with some better practice solutions now. Statutes, unfortunately, that, that were referenced back then don't exist now, you know, but statutes do exist, you know, that govern that money, you know, and clearly, I know that there's been talk about the library, you know, being its own nonprofit corporation, and there's pros and cons, you know, with that, and, and I think that that's where you're at right now, just sitting down with the library, just coming up, you know, with what's the best interest and best practice for the town of Rockport, which includes the library.
And I think, you need to come up, if you're going to speak, and before you speak, I'm going to, I'm going to say, I wasn't here for that time, but I, it's been around for a while, that at the time, there was a fairly sizable donation to the library, which was a painting or something like that, which was sold for a large sum of money, and there were some folks in town who wanted to make sure that that money stayed with the library, and, and that's the genesis of all this, and I think, over the years, that the spirit of that agreement has been honored, that that money has been used for the library over the years, and, and I think we just, and, and I don't think there are any issues with it at all right now, but I think that that's the time when you want to address these things, is when you don't have any issues, and just to make sure that the spirit stays as it was, and, and that no issues arise, so.
So we're dealing with a forty-year-old gentleman's agreement, basically, in some, some respect.
Sure enough. So, in the...
And just so, for the folks at home, Heaven, would you introduce yourself?
My name's Heaven Bartlett, I'm chair of the library committee. So, in hopes of updating the forty-year-old gentleman's agreement, we have had Helen scrubbing through everything there is to do with the town and the library. She's found several things, and I've given Doug copies, I don't know if you guys have gotten it, if not, I can totally send it off to you. But we are working on what would essentially be an agreement between you guys and us that would just solidify what is exactly is our duties to the town and to the library, and what exactly we are able to do with the fund. The fund is the library's, and we were given the responsibility to oversee that, and we want to keep it that way. So, that's basically what we're trying to do, is just fix what the auditor is having an issue with, while also keeping it the way that the town has asked us to keep it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and I think that's, that's the intent that I've sort of had all along with this, is that we, we just dot a few i's, cross a few t's, and then that gives us what we need to, to keep it on a solid footing going forward. So I think that takes care of everything that was on page two of the management letter. Does anybody else have any questions for Ron?
At some point in the future, under the cash receding, Rick talks a little, and this doesn't have anything to do with Ron, so I apologize for skipping here, but talking about making adjustments to the hours that the personnel work at the, in the town office, and we've had some discussions in the past about that, you know, could we serve our citizenry better by extending hours on certain days? And Waldaborough just did this, so at some point in the future, I'd like to sort of bring that up for discussion.
Yeah, and I, we, I've had a conversation with, with Mark one time about it, and Rick, we find a way to do that, and maybe one evening a week or something like that, and maybe that comes along with shortening the hours on the other day so that the new procedures can be accomplished in, in the most efficient way possible, or something like that. But yeah, that's a discussion for a future time, I think.
Are we ready for a motion to accept the auditor's report as presented?
I'm ready, if you want to make it.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the report from the auditor as presented. Does anybody have any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote.
Thank you, Ron.
It's been a great pleasure, good seeing you all.
And thank you, Megan, for the work, and, and thank you, Heaven, for doing the work on the library stuff, it's, everything is moving forward in a good way with this, and I think, that's good stuff, so. Okay, we don't have any wastewater, we don't have, do we have any liaison reports?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
All right. Doug?
So you heard just now about the ongoing discussions with the auditor, et cetera. On a more personal note, one of our librarians, Laura Missouri, was recently appointed or elected to the main state cataloging standards committee, which is really quite an honor for one of our local librarians, so I think we'd like to give her a special shout out to Laura Missouri.
Scratch that off my next month's manager's report.
I can do it a second time, that's all right.
We should, and maybe just a quick card that we could sign and say congratulations.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Let's do a card.
Planning board, there's sort of four projects in various stages of the sausage grinder. The Pratt Brothers wanted to do a little expansion of their auto repair shop out on Route seventeen. Plans Unlimited wants to enlarge some of its storage area outback on its current location. Steve Lates, Camden Exxon, towing business on Route ninety there. He has to do some landscaping to satisfy the, the planning board, just because of the volume of automobiles and things like that, and that's coming along. And probably most exciting is, everybody remember Mr. Watt?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, he's, he's coming back, and he's going to be opening a Thai pizza takeout only at the old shoemaker, there was shoe repair shop there on Route ninety. But listen, you know, these, these projects are interesting, but I want the take-home message to be, that committee does an incredibly professional job. I mean, talk about being able to sleep at night, Warren running that committee, they, they just do a great job and make sure everything's in good shape, so I feel very reassured when I go to that committee that they're doing it right. The investment committee meets on February twelfth with people down at the hospital, because there is a, a trust, the Wideman Trust, I've referred, referred to it here before, it has four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in it, and it's dedicated to paying healthcare costs for citizens of Rockport that need it. Up to this point, we don't think anyone has ever taken advantage of it, that money's just been sitting there for many years.
Growing.
Yeah, it's growing. The, the investment committee wants to meet with the hospital to see if we can somehow set up an interface to improve the communication, so hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, the investment committee will come here with a recommendation to the select board on how we might use that money more efficiently in the interests of town citizens. The library design committee, as I mentioned earlier, has, through the architect, Steve Smith, has hired Nadine Cole...
Cole. How could you forget that?
Out of Portland, who's done many libraries down south, she's being paid for, actually, by a donor separately, so that's very kind of them, and we met with her last week, she seemed very capable, I think she's going to do a very good job for us. And we also met with the hardscape people who work with Terry Dewan, and again, I'm trying to start to use that word, hardscape, because we're not talking trees, or bulbs, or azaleas, because we just don't have that money right now, but there are, is a need for retaining walls, roughly where some sidewalks go, where various grades are going to be, so they're getting involved now in the process. That's the end of my report.
I would add, talk about, I missed the last library design meeting, but the owner's representative has gotten to me the numbers on the quarter-by-quarter expenses for the library, and I haven't heard from the foundation yet, I haven't had a chance to, to insert the, the...
Yeah, John had, I got an email from John Veman, said they're working on that, and they will have it before the, the eleventh meeting.
So we'll have that information.
Before the eleventh, it'd be good to have it for a few days so that we can look at it, review, and ask questions, so that we're not doing it in a...
Right, that's our plan.
But, so anyway, I've been gathering those numbers. Legacy Rockport is...
Sorry, could I, I have a question on the library before we move on to that. My, this predates my, Jeff and I being elected to the, to the select board, and so my question is this, I, I know that there was a lot of controversy over the whole issue of parking with the library, and my, and the intersection and all of that, and my understanding by having, as a citizen, watched the live stream meetings, that there was never any final, hard, and fast plan definitely approved by the select board with respect to parking and the intersection, but I'm, that's a question, and so I'm asking if I'm, if my impression on that is wrong.
Well, I, I'd have to give it some thought, I know at the last design team meeting, we did all agree that the site plan was the one we were operating from that did have planning, that did have parking on it. But again, Rick's going to have to, to talk about this, I'm pretty sure that the whole parking and the intersection thing are in separate parts of the, the budget, that are either going to have to be approved or disapproved.
Right, right, when we are working on the budget, so I know that even if it was approved, it hasn't been budgeted for yet, so...
What's, what's happened is that as we've gone through the design phase, that there's been some assumptions made, well, some of the intersection changes have to happen to accommodate the building.
Sure, right.
And, and Lime Rock Street, where the parking is, this is the hardscaping, where the grades are and everything.
Right. And so the design has been put forward with a parking plan on it. Now, the funding for that is different than the funding for the library, and that was made clear by the select board when the vote happened back in...
Right, and I, I knew that, yeah.
So that will have to be part of our, our annual budget going forward, so.
I mean, I guess all that said, I don't, I don't have the impression that there is a hard and fast decision with respect to parking, because, number one, we haven't, we haven't approved a budget for it, and, number two, we know that it wasn't part of the one point five million, we made that very clear, so anyway.
There's a lot of history there, and...
Yeah, I know.
You know, I think if we got the library committee in here to talk, and again, I don't want to relive a lot of old history, but, you know, as the negotiations went back and forth about the sites and everything else, sort of one of the non-negotiable bargaining points for the one Lime Rock Street location was, is that there would be improvements made to the parking, not just for the library, but for the whole downtown area, as witnessed by Bay Chamber concerts, and, you know, when everything goes on, so...
Yeah, I saw those on livestream.
You know, we can reopen that, you're right, you know, I mean, I suppose we could do what we want as the select board.
From what I hear, around town, there's a lot of support for the parking plan as it has been drafted, now, there's not a hundred percent support, and never will be.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, right.
But that's, that's a debate we'll have to have at town meetings, because that'll have to be in the budget.
Right, well, I just wanted to know, I, I know that we're going into the budget season, and I kind of wanted to know where you both saw... and I kind of wanted to know where you both saw that standing in terms of my understanding of it, um, since you were both on the board.
Well, the parking has been discussed, and the parking and the intersection has been discussed for several years.
Right.
And it was part of our budget last year, and it got cut out of the budget last year so that it could be done this year, and, which is making it a challenge for us developing the budget. It, you know, we're...
Well, it, any solution might need to be a phased solution as well.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the other thing to be thinking about, is you don't have to bite off the whole elephant in one shot.
Right.
Uh, my understanding is because it's a state highway, fifty percent of any changes to the rotary and the intersection would be half-covered by the state.
Exactly.
Well, this is what complicates it though, Jeff, because you're talking the intersection, but I think the real controversial part is the parking, which is Lime Rock.
Well, what I'm trying to think through in my mind is when we go to discuss the budgeting activities, we're going to have to discuss the intersection.
Yeah.
And how much of that are we going to fund? Are we even going to fund it this year or not? Then we'll have to discuss as part of the budgeting activity, the parking issue, which you just mentioned, is open for discussion again, even though I understand there's a lot of history and plan. There may be a phased solution to that that could be worked.
Some of it will depend on, um, because the library is slated right now, the schedule that the owner's rep has given us has completion in August of 2020. So it may be that we can, and, and I don't, we'll have to see where that goes, but it may be that we can, we can get some budget for the following year or something like that.
For this year, and then some for the following year, we put stuff in reserve.
That'll have to be a recommendation, I think, from...
Well, you could, you could still put the money in there in this upcoming budget for, for Lime Rock Street as the improvement for that year, and come the end of June, we could carry it over into the upcoming year.
Right.
There's a couple of different ways to skin the case.
So I mean, we, you know, and that would be, you know, that would be a direction I would go, is to have that be the street of the year, if you will, and it'd be done when it could be done, after the completion or near the end of the completion.
I don't want to show my cards too early in the budget process, but I'm leaning that direction, yeah.
I mean, that way, we, we can put something in there this year for something this year, and then next year, we, we just keep it on going into something else.
My only issue is, I don't want to tear that street up twice.
Yeah, there's some...
We're not going to, I mean, if you don't do it until after the project is done.
Well, but some things you, some of the things are going to have to be done as the project is developed. That's just the nature of the construction.
Yeah, the, the nature of the construction, you know, if we know for a fact, it's, you know, I think we could do it if we know for a fact we're going to phase it over, you know, this budget year and the next budget year, you, we might be able to, to do that. If, if there's a commitment to doing that in a two-year phasing, uh, we, that's maybe possible.
I mean, I, that's, that's what I tend to think. It, it makes sense, is some phasing. But I also, I, I also really just wanted to know, I, if, if the absolute design of the parking was baked in or not in, in our view, and that was really my question, and so I, we're obviously going to have lots of discussion about this in the budget.
If I'm not mistaken, the net gain's only, what, six spots or...
Six spots is a lot.
No, I know, but, you know, for the 200,000, we're going to put into that area, roughly.
Well...
But, you know...
As I say, we could have a long discussion on it.
We'll have a long, I'm sure we're going to debate this in, in infinite detail at some point in the future.
Right.
So this, you know, not having anything to talk about my liaison projects, but what I'm signing here is the internal control.
That's the back page of the internal control.
All right.
That's the acceptance of the internal control policy I signed.
Sorry, you were going to talk about legacy.
Oh, yeah. That was a long time ago.
Doug signed this.
Legacy Rockport met, and they're actually, I don't know where they are with it right now, they're toying with the idea of another dinner on the bridge, um, to benefit a couple of, uh, projects in town. Um, I don't know where that's going. It, it's in the very early stages right now, but...
All right, other, lastly, on committee reports...
Not lastly.
Not, sorry, not lastly. The only one I've got is the harbor committee's meeting this week. There hasn't been anything new since earlier in the month.
And I've not had anything since our last meeting.
So, so, um, technology committee had their meeting with Finley Engineering that I mentioned. We had people from South, um, representatives from South Thomaston, Hope? Hope, did we have a Hope person there?
No.
Oh, okay, not Hope. Rockland, Camden, Rockport, does that sound right, Rick?
Yes.
Yeah, and so that was a good...
And Alson.
Oh, and Alson, that, that's right. And that was a good, um, first, um, discussion with those, with the Finley Engineering people. Mostly, I wanted to talk about my Doug Cole legacy project, which is...
Never gonna lie, you're gonna live that dumb lady.
And of course, you know, we're looking for a new general manager, and so the personnel committee is, uh, working with the board on that. Um, as was already mentioned, um, I was brought to the finance committee, much to my dismay. Um, and, uh, so I'll be working with Allison and crew on, uh, on, on that committee. Um, we are looking at putting together a governance committee, and I did a suggested mission statement that I sent off, uh, to some folks for that, and I would plan to, um, participate on the governance committee, which, you know, will be the whole issue of looking at the bylaws, looking at the inter-local agreement, looking at statutes, blah, blah, blah. And, um, you know, I mean, there's, there's a very real desire on a lot of those board members to do that, so I think that, um, you know, I think, I think it needs to be done.
Yeah, I know Owen brought it up when he reported to us back in the fall that those bylaws were outdated and, and weren't reflective of current practice and things like that.
Yeah, so I think with, uh, with my background, um, it would make sense for me to be...
There are two levels. There's the bylaws and the articles of agreement, you know, and there's some conflicting stuff in both in them if they pass over.
Yeah. Um, and, um, the, um, the board did approve their budget at the last meeting, and one thing that I've already mentioned this to Rick and to Megan, but, um, you know, for some years, at least the last, I think since FY fiscal year sixteen, I think, they've been paying us $6,000, um, uh, for donation in lieu of taxes.
In lieu of taxes, yeah.
And this year, this year it was suggested, um, that that be reduced to $4,130. And even though Owen and I and Dave Barrows from, um, Lincolnville argued and voted against it, uh, the reduction, um, Hope and Camden voted in favor of it with the weighted votes carried the day. So, um, we will get a little less from them. I had this discussion with Rick and Megan, and I think that, um, I, I think this goes back to this whole transparency issue that we've been discussing, like, with the library. I know when we were saying that we wanted the public works, um, use of employee time to be transparent and to go to, um, charge back to the library. What happens here is that I understand that the $6,000 really isn't adequate. I mean, that's the fee, the feeling, the impression from the town, town employees is that the $6,000 is not really adequate to, um, pay Rockport for all of the particularly public works, um, service and support that they do over at the transfer station, and so it shouldn't have gone down, it should have gone up. Now, I understand that the board took the position that it needs to be, the amount that's paid needs to be formulaic, and so they talked with Carrie, um, about the value of the town, and then they, you know, then, and then the mill rate, and then they took thirty percent of that, taking out the, your famous, uh, taxes and county, county taxes and school, and that's how they came up with the four, $41.30. So it does make sense to have, have it be formula-based, however, I mean, i- it's logical, okay, rather than just kind of take a number out of the sky. However, um, I think what's even more logical is that we, as a town, going forward, and I've suggested this to Rick and Megan, that we try to, to the extent we can, recreate the services that Public Works has provided over the last six months, and certainly from now on, start keeping track of those services. And while it won't help us in this year, we would then be prepared next year to come back and say, okay, well, this is actually what we do for you, and we're going to just bill it through to the transfer station. Camden, um, has Jody, uh, doing accounting. Their employee does the accounting stuff for, for, um, for the Midco Solid Waste Corporation, and according to Bob Falciani, it is in fact billed through to, um, to the transfer station. So why shouldn't we be billing ours through to the, you know, again, for transparency purposes?
This, this falls back to the discussion we had last time we met around detailed time sheets of Public Works employees so that we could see in the allocation of the time where energy and effort is being spent.
Prior to everyone here's arrival, in the Tom Farley era, there was a municipal performance measuring program, which took all of your activities during the day and, and broke them down into how many minutes, how many hours, and that way, at the end of the day, when somebody asked, you could say, out of your ten-hour day, you spent six hours doing whatever.
That was the, the whole discussion with the previous manager was that if we were going to cut back on that payment in lieu of taxes, that we were going to have to start, we were going to start billing them for the time that we're in there sanding. They plow ninety percent of the time, you know, they, they take care of their own plowing in there, but there are times that if, if it gets really bad, we, we go in there and plow. Uh, we also will go in and sand and salt the, the area. Also, if they get...
Respond to fires there.
Right, yeah, if there's a...
That's a big one, is when there's a fire in there, it's, I mean, days are in there.
Right.
And breakdown of equipment.
If there's a breakdown of equipment there, you know, our guys are pretty good at fixing it, and, but we'll be billing that back to them, um, so...
Right, so...
We are, or we will be?
We will be.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we, I think we need to make that determination, right, because right now, uh, you know, right now, they're going to pay us the $41.30 next year.
Right, but they're going to pay that no matter what.
Right, they're going to pay that in lieu of taxes next year, but, 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 I mean, are they double billing, if we're going to start billing them while they're paying us in lieu of taxes?
Well, I mean, yeah, I think so, because, I mean, for, let's just take the example. I mean, I pay my taxes, but the town doesn't come and plow my driveway.
Right.
So if we're doing above and beyond what, what would be expected from a citizen or a business for taxes, then I don't, I don't think there's any contingency with billing that.
I see what your point is, yeah, okay.
We probably can't bill for the fire protection, because everybody gets that, but that's, I mean, there've been a couple times over the years where there's been a fire there that lasted for a week and a half, and they've always got to have a fire there.
But we're going to have to coordinate on that because that's going to be news to them, so we're, I mean, it's going to be news to the finance committee and the board because the board's not aware of that.
Okay, do, do we need to vote on such thing?
Um, I think...
Eventually, we probably will, or you will.
Well, I think that we, as a board, probably should if we're going to start, um, down that path of billing them for services.
I mean, a corporation would be free then to go find another contractor to do their plowing. My guess is they won't find a better deal.
Right, right.
So, okay. So, do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, I think so.
Let me, let me try one. I motion that we adopt the principal policy, uh, that the town of Rockport bill Midco Solid Waste for efforts and expenses above and beyond that, which would otherwise normally be covered under taxes.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. My only concern with it is I don't know where we are with, um, I, I support the idea, but I, I, I would feel more comfortable if we ran this by town council and, and saw where we were with it and how we could do it and make sure that we do it the right way. That would be my comment.
Let me amend my motion if I could. The prior motion pending review and approval, or review, not approval, review by town council.
Okay. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
So, so let me just ask, um, so, so as I understand that motion, it's to bill, in, in the next fiscal year, let's say, okay, it's to build, bill them, you said above and beyond the taxes.
Those services, those services which would not normally be covered by customary unusual tax.
That would be for us, when we go in there and sand and salt, when we go in there and plow, which they would normally hire that out.
Okay.
When the equipment breaks down, you know, if we can help them out, typically, if we can help them out and keep them running, we help them out and keep them running, but, you know...
But we're not, but we're not charging them for fires then, and fire response?
Or police.
Okay.
Can't do that.
Police, okay, okay, I just want to make sure I understood the motion.
It's services as opposed to...
Yeah, okay.
Could I ask a question about broadband? What is...
We've got a motion on the table here.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Um, and so, as I understand the motion, we're going to have review by town council on, on the practice, and, um, if the practice is found to be, uh, well, I'm thinking more in terms the other way. If it's found to be unreasonable, then, then the town council will get back to us with a recommendation as to how to, how to fix it.
My, my guess is it will be okay.
Okay.
You know?
But I just want to make sure, um, so, okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, okay, five to nothing.
Quick question on broadband. What's the end game with this ad hoc committee?
I think the end, right now, the, right now, the, I don't know if I'd call it the end game, but, um, I think now is, um, we're still trying to figure out, um, the interest level of surrounding towns and the options that we have to move forward in a way that doesn't raise taxpayer funds. And, you know, like, the development of regi, regional utility district or whatever, not that it has to be that. And so, again, it's to, it's to try to figure that out, put some numbers to it, try, um, you know, have something much more solid that we could then bring back to the select board and the town as to, you know, whether or not we would go forward.
And do you have a sort of a timeframe, I mean, six months, a year from now?
No, it's on my goals.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I, I, you know, this was the first meeting of a group of towns to start discussing it together. We did have the one meeting with Bank, with a financial institution of Camden, you know, Camden and Rockport met, um, with some, some folks, but, um, this is the first meeting of those towns, so, and it was sort of, we were planning on doing a meeting in January, and this became the meeting since Finley was in town.
Anything else under liaison reports? Um, if not, then I would entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Make a motion to enter executive sketch, executive session for discussion of a personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA section 4056A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll do that.
All right.